Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. This is the August -- regular business meeting of the Sandwich School Committee for August 27th, 2025. We will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening. And just a reminder, members of the public can listen and watch this meeting live via livestream on www.sandwichtv.org and also Sandwich Community Television Education Channel Number Eight. It is also being audio recorded by The Sandwich Enterprise. So with that, next up is Public Forum, our first public forum of the evening. Would anybody like to come forward for Public Forum? Seeing none. Moving on, we'll review and act on the business meeting that -- tongue-tied, sorry. Review and act on the meeting minutes for our regular business meeting of August 13th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented from August 13th, 2025. Second.
Motion by Ms. Menendez, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 7-0. Go ahead with gas. Next up is Correspondence and Announcements. I have none. Unless anybody has anything? Seeing none. Moving on to the Superintendent's Update.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Happy first day of the school year, at least with staff. Our 183-day journey started in earnest today, so welcome to everybody. The first thing on my update is the introduction of new administrative staff. I'm really pleased to give an introduction to all of you, to four remarkable individuals, some of which are hardly a stranger to our district. But I'd like to start with our brand-new Director of Facilities, Michael Ryan. Mike, if maybe you could just stand and wave for the folks. Mike started with us on July 1st. In addition to being a proud Sandwich resident, he is an alum of Stonehill College, but also his master's degree from Massachusetts Maritime Academy, a master's of science in facilities management, with also a certificate in facilities management from BU. Michael really has a rich experience, going back particularly to 2015, where he worked as a facility service manager and facilities operation manager for both Harvard Law School and Harvard Medical School. In those capacities, he had direct contact for all facility-related inquiries, campus-wide initiatives, and general maintenance and upkeep of medical school and then prior to that, law school facilities. Also oversaw departmental budgets and also the procurement process, which is huge in this capacity. So as I said, Michael took duties here in Sandwich on July 1st, and very shortly, he will be giving an update to the committee on a lot of the work that took place, has taken place this summer. Bless you.
Excuse me.
Second person, again, as I said, hardly a stranger to our district, is Kevin Brijali. Kevin will be acting as the interim principal of the Oak Ridge School. As I said to the community in email right in the beginning of July, I think in a lot of ways, this is kind of full circle for Kevin, because Kevin started his career quite a few years ago as a social studies teacher at the Oak Ridge School back in the day. I think, what was it, 35 years ago, Kevin? 35 years ago this week. God bless you. He's had a rich and illustrious career as an educator. 21 years as a classroom teacher. Also served as the ELA Department Chair at Sandwich High School. As an administrator, served as an assistant principal at Sandwich High School, and then for 12 years as the principal of the Old Rochester Regional Junior High School in Mattapoisett. To boot, he's had an outstanding record as a coach, as he was the varsity cross-country coach at Sandwich High School for 15 years, and then had an amazing run as the varsity basketball coach at Wareham High School. He's a kindred spirit with all of you, because he serves his community of Wareham, on the Wareham School Committee. So welcome, once again, to Kevin. Third, we have somebody who is stepping into the role as our human resources specialist, Vicky Dauphine, who I think all of you know really, really well. Vicky's been serving our district for 14 years now, in various capacities, starting as a bookkeeper, an administrative assistant at the high school, and then specifically with the food services program. And then over the last five-plus years, has served as the executive assistant to the superintendent. In thinking about just impeccable management skills, impeccable organizational skills, Vicky comes to mind. But probably even more important than that, in thinking in this role, of who you would want to be the face of the district as you're welcoming new people in through the onboarding process, I honestly could not think of a better person than Vicky. So welcome, Vicky. Delighted to see you in this role. And then last, but certainly not least, we -- I'd like to welcome somebody who we just went through the interview process last week that we're excited to bring on board, and that's Jennifer Healy as our new Director of Pupil Services. Welcome, Jen. Jen has been an educator over the last 14 years in the Middleborough Public Schools, serving as first as a special education teacher, really spearheading a very unique and novel program, a substantially separate classroom at the middle school level. Then she moved on and, for a period of six years, served as a special ed coordinator, first strictly at the high school, but then the high school and the middle school. And over the last three years, she's been doing the work as the District Director of Special Education. Had the opportunity, over the last week, to connect with Jen several times. She very strongly impressed our interviewing team and then members of our leadership team, just with her acute knowledge and background on both compliance and legal issues, things like circuit breaker, things like budgeting, but really, when push comes to shove, doing consistently what is right for students. So very delighted to welcome Jen to our team. Later on the agenda, seeing that this is one of the four positions that school committee must approve, per mass general law, we'll have for consideration her contract. But I'd like to welcome all four of you, and I really look forward to working with you in these capacities. So we're going to put one of them to the test right now, and I've asked, typically, at this meeting, right when school is starting, I've asked Michael to come to talk about what is some of the summer work, what are some of the key projects, and so on. So Mike, if you could take a seat right next to Alexis, and I will get this up and running.
I should probably do the same. There you go. Turned it off when I sneezed.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the introduction, Joe. So as I said, my name is Michael Ryan. I'm the new--
If you could speak a little closer to the mic so they can --
Absolutely.
So you can hear it at home. Thanks.
Sure, of course. I'm the new Facilities Director at Sandwich Public Schools, and I wanted to go over some of the accomplishments that we completed this summer. Like Joe said, I started right around the 1st of July, so we got right into work. There was an ongoing capital project, this Oak Ridge HVAC project. Some of the slides you can see, we added these exterior condensers, ceiling-mounted fan cool units, energy recovery units that are going to mix the fresh air with the conditioned air. So the goal was to increase occupant comfort and also indoor air quality, but also we'll see a great improvement in energy savings at Oak Ridge. The work is substantially complete, with some minor controls. We're continuing throughout this week and probably into next week. Up next, we're going to move to the Oak Ridge Key Project. So continuing with the work that was done this spring at Forestale. Keys were turned over to staff today, and we conducted an in-person training. The project includes adding new locks to all classroom doors to increase occupant safety and the staff's ability to lock down interior doors in the case of emergency. We're going to move on to some flooring work, also at Oak Ridge, where we added luxury vinyl tile to seven classrooms this summer. We're replacing this 40-year, 45-year-old carpet. The great thing about LVT, it's very low maintenance and easy to clean, so my social staff's really excited about it. And then also the staff who I spoke with today, who had the new flooring installed in their classrooms, are really happy about it as well. I'm going to move on to some additional floor work, flooring work, excuse me, at Forestale. And we added the same LVT at two classrooms in the Spindaker classroom, excuse me. And we're going to do some additional flooring work at the schools this year during winter breaks, or, sorry, school breaks. And then we're going to continue on to, also at Forestale, we painted all the existing parking lines. We added two new crosswalks for pedestrian safety, and we also added a lot of signage and a fire lane for improvement in the parking lot for apparent pickup, which is going to be very helpful just for directing traffic and for staff, or, sorry, parents who are coming to pick up their staff, their students, excuse me. Move on now. This is really a point of pride here, where there was-- as a father in the community, I noticed that there was a bench that's been broken since January. So when I started, that was one of the first things we jumped on. Maintenance staff really turned around. They did a great job removing and replacing a broken bench right by the lower playground. And I think it looks great. We got a lot of great feedback on this as well on Facebook.
But did you take that picture and post it on Sandwich Scoop? I need to know.
I did not, but I was happy to see that people were excited about it. Yeah.
Excellent job. The guys did a terrific job with that, Michael.
That's Pat and Tyler from our maintenance crew. They did a great job there. All right. So we're going to move on. So again, at Forestale, in the School for Early Learning, we did a lot of work in the rear of Forestale, where we added 20 parking spaces for staff parking and for student drop-off. We're also adding a walkway that goes from the cafeteria to the second playground with a fence that goes along it to protect the students as they're walking from the school to the playground itself. And again, in the SEL, we added, in the School for Early Learning, we lowered six lavatory sinks to proper height for the age group, and then we added new child-safe countertops. Looks like that picture's on its side, but the pictures-- you can see that we're going to update the painting there, so it's going to match that existing green. And then finally, at the Sandwich Middle High School, in the front entry, in that foyer area, we repaired some leaks, patched and painted the ceiling, and then we painted the railings on the second and third level to match the existing window mullions and door trim, that traditional Sandwich blue that you kind of see everywhere. And I really want to push a path towards uniformity in all schools, using paint colors, but also furniture, hardware, and things like that. So those are some of the things we accomplished this summer.
Any questions? Dr. Miller.
Tomorrow morning, they're starting at 5:00 AM. They're going to sweep the Oak Ridge Road, and they're going to start paving that one lane at a time, allowing one lane to be open for staff who need to come in. We still have HVAC workers and then all the staff who's setting up their classrooms. And then after that's complete, they'll do one lane and then the other, and then they're going to move over to Forestale, hoping to be finished early afternoon.
Ms. Menendez.
It might be for Joe question. Welcome aboard, Michael.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you. A quick question about the flooring. I know last meeting, we talked about that their purchase order wasn't made in time, et cetera. How many more floors, I mean, how many more classrooms will be getting replacement of flooring this year?
I think we could probably easily do between 10 to 12 additional classrooms.
And it's all at Forestale, or are they between both schools?
We're trying really hard to split both. We don't-- right now, Oak Ridge has the advantage, so I think we'll be cognizant. I will make one correction on Michael's presentation. The carpeting is not 45 years old. It's only 35 years old, okay? Minor error. But yeah, I think we will, you know, work with Chris and Kevin to kind of go for the places that need it the most. I think, though, not to speak for Michael, but I think in working with contractors to do that work, you generally try to do a section, a wing, you know, to make it convenient and so on. But yeah, we will target where the greatest needs are.
Okay. And just one more, the repaired leaks in the foyer at the Middle High School. Is this, is this a new problem? Is this an old problem that we're, that was corrected, and now we just needed to paint it on the interior?
Can I take that, Joe?
Yeah.
There was just a lot of water staining and damaged drywall in the, in between the two sets of glass doors. So we did some flash and repairs, silicone, and then we had that painted and just make it look fresh. The entry to the building, you want it to look nice for--
Yeah.
Another law community uses the building, as well as the students, so.
Yep. Great.
We just piggyback. We already had an open quote to paint the railings, so while we brought them in, we use them the same. Use their equipment, their labor to make the place a bit better.
Thank you.
Dr. Miller.
I seem to recall that a number of the schools, at least at the Forestale and perhaps at classrooms at the Oak Ridge, teachers had their own kind of sectional carpets. Will they be able to add that bit of, because they like to sit on--
Yeah, because most of them are individual rugs.
Yeah.
They use for--
They'll be able to use those--
technical time or classroom meeting and so on. That's not a problem whatsoever. And as a matter of fact, Sue, you could go into classrooms that have already had the vinyl tiling put in, and their rugs are still there.
Okay. That helps with acoustics as well, so that's good.
It helps with what?
The acoustics of the room.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alexis.
So I wanted to know, like, I was just wondering if, like, you know, the painting of the fire lanes at the Forestale School, is that to hopefully prevent parents from parking--
Absolutely.
--double-sided? Okay, because that was always a nightmare.
Something Chris and I walked on as soon as we started, because that was something I noticed when picking up my kids there. Same thing, that it's really, really tough to manage that turnaround when there's cars on either side, so that was--
Right, and cars can't see when kids are leaving the school, but also I have almost been sideswiped a few times in that.
Yeah, big SUV, so that's one of the things where we added those candy cane cones connecting with ropes. And I think there's going to be some, you know, parent training, we'll say, not to park in those areas. But we'll leave the cones up for a while.
All right.
Anyone else? Couple quicks. Ms. Menendez hit it. I was going to ask. You said 10 to 12 more. How many do we have left to do? I mean, I don't know the exact number. If you got a ballpark of how many more-- how many more rooms of carpet do we have to get rid of?
It's a great question. I don't know offhand specifically. I'd be happy to get that, and I could definitely walk it down. But I'd say we probably have a third of the rooms done at Oak Ridge, and I'd say less than that at Forestale.
Okay. No, that gives me the mindset, fair enough.
I could definitely get you hard numbers.
I don't need the exact number. That helps. That gives me a sense of what more we have to do, but thank you. The only other question I had was, great to see that the HVAC's going to be done for the opening of school.
Yeah.
Can you go back to that first picture, Joe? The condensers, if, it looks like that's back by the gym and where the playground is?
Correct.
I'm just wary of a Gaga ball or something else hitting those. Are we going to do any kind of fencing or protecting, or?
We talked about some privacy fencing. You can see on the condensers in the foreground, there's that snow, like, hoods that are on top. They haven't been added to the ones down in the background. But as far as like a privacy fence or something to keep the students from playing in that area or a ball hitting it, I'm not worried about the fin tubes getting damaged because of those hoods, but at the same time, do we want to keep students from out of there? Certainly could look into that, yeah.
It's that attractive nuisance bit. I just, it's a point for consideration. Not so much during recess, because, you know, teachers will be there. It's after hours. Who knows what, you know?
Absolutely, yeah.
Something to consider. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Ms. Goodwin.
Just more of a request as we see you throughout the year. Just updates on how everything will be maintained, because I know so many conversations have been around in the past. There wasn't a great maintenance plan, or maybe there was miscommunication around maintenance plans. I'm not sure, but just how, overall and into the future, things will be maintained.
Yeah, so are you talking in general, or preventative maintenance plan?
Yes, both.
Preventive maintenance plan specifically for HVAC or mechanical systems?
I'm thinking more general and then the preventative.
Yeah, so I've been working with the staff, really trying to implement our work order system and making sure that they're documenting all the work that we need done, so we have a record of it, so we're able to follow up with it. Been meeting with the principals, kind of going over our open work order report for operational maintenance. But then we also have the same computer management maintenance system or maintenance management system, CMMS, that is able to put in preventative maintenance work orders for-- usually it's typically for mechanical systems, and that's something that we're actively trying to revamp a little bit, because we have a lot of that existing infrastructure. We just need to use it better, I'll say. So that's something that'll document on the HVAC, filter changes or coil cleanings, things that we need to do regularly, that, you know, manufacturers recommend it to do X. And that's another thing that I'm working on right now is, you know, for the next year, we'll have a labor warranty for the mechanical systems that was put in at Oak Ridge. But then after that, we're going to need a vendor to come in and do regular cleaning, filter changes, and things like that. So that's something that we're going to be using the infrastructure that we have to just, like I said, use it better.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Well, welcome aboard. It's a big job, lots to do. Thank you for all the hard work this summer, and we'll see you soon.
Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you.
So next, we have, under my update, a concise reporting of the Spring 2025 AP results. I would say we really maintained a very high level. So Jeannie is here to talk a little bit about how our students did.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So we had, for the Spring of 2025, we had 188 students take a variety of AP exams. Our total number of AP exams was 380 exams were administered. On the next slide, we have kind of a breakdown of each, offering each AP exam that was administered, the number of exams given, the mean score, and then the percentage of A3 or above. Last year, Spring of 2024, we, we had the AP score report put us at like an 81%. We dipped a tiny bit there with the 78% overall, and you can see the breakdown there on the number of exams. Just, we did increase the number of exams, which is great. We have an AP enrollment for all, and we do want students to take APs and experience that rigor of a college-like class. And then we had the number of AP students with three or above. 147 students scored A3 or above. So that landed us at 78%.
Yes. Just a question. In, there are some very low numbers of AP exams. Does that reflect the total enrollment in the class, or just those students that, so?
Yes, yeah. So we, so in some cases, for example, Calc BC, that is a, that is a virtual course, because we don't have the number of students. So that is, that was one student in this case who took the class online through Virtual High School and then sat for the exam. The other, the numbers, we are trying, we do try to, like, the CSA, Computer Science Applications, that was a class of seven students. Again, we're starting our new pathway program, so we're really looking forward to having that develop and grow and have more enrollment there, but that was a class of seven students.
And in Latin, there are more students enrolled in Latin than take the AP exam.
Yes. Oh, yes. Yes.
I guess, I'm just thinking of class size and budget and--
Yes. So just, just for, in some perspective, so when you get, with the languages especially, we do combine some of like a Latin 5 class with a Latin AP, so the classroom, that period, the teacher's, is kind of dual teaching. And you may only have, in this case, have two students that have either availability for AP Latin on their schedule or interest at that high level. So that would be, that would reflect that.
When we get to budget time, I think it would be helpful to see the exams and also a column with total enrollment.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Fisher.
How do these scores compare with other districts?
So, so we, they, they're, they're really well. If you go to the last slide, if you don't mind, so we, if you look at our scores, this is a school summary report. So AP scholars, number of students, 33. They would be students who take AP and have a score of three or above. AP scholar with honors would be a student who scores three or above on four or more exams. And then the AP scholar with distinction is a student who's scoring three or above on five exams, or-- So, so we will receive, we haven't received it yet. Last year, we were identified as a Silver like honor award from the College Board, and I do, I do expect to be recognized again for the AP success.
What does Silver mean?
It's a summary of, it's that the College Board has recognized the school for high performance on AP exams.
Do any other Cape Cod schools get that?
I don't know, off the top of my--
I can answer your question, Bert. So there's three levels, and I believe, over the last two Octobers, we kind of discussed this at the school committee meeting. They look at three criteria areas. They look at what are your overall scores and kind of the bottom line is what percentage of scores are three or higher? They look at your participation rate, and then they also look at the scholar piece, kids that are taking numerous AP courses. And really, they hone in on what percentage of students in a graduating class had the experience of at least one AP class. If you recall, we're consistently in the ballpark of around 51%, 52% of our students upon graduation are experiencing at least one AP. So they look at those three criteria areas and, based upon performance, have an honor roll and three categories, bronze, silver, and gold. Over the last two years, we've been in the silver category based upon those three criteria areas. Because our performance is very, very similar to last year's, I would anticipate us being a silver honor roll school once again.
Those are participation. What's, what about the scores?
No, the three criteria areas are related to the scores. The first one being the percentage of kids that score three or higher.
Got it.
To answer your question, the two schools that I know of that also were in the honor roll were Nauset and Monomoy.
That's good company.
And that other information comes out in October. They just have--
Yeah, it's usually right around October 15.
Just another question. Do all students enrolled in an AP course take the AP exam?
We, we encourage full participation. Occasionally, we have a situation where a student may not take the exam, but it's very, very rare.
And so I would hope-- And so I would hope that the final assessment for those who do not take the AP is comparable to the AP exam in terms of rigor.
Right.
Do the kids have to pay for this exam?
Yes.
And how much do they have to pay?
So they, it has fluctuated. Most recently, I think it is $90 an exam.
And what if a kid, it might have some issues coming up with the money?
Yep. So if there's financial hardship, that we 100% will cover the cost of that exam.
Any other questions? See none. Thank you. Look forward to the update in October.
So the next item, as we typically do right around this time of year, is to kind of look at the data around home instruction. I believe you have it in your background notes. What we have, generally speaking, is kind of status quo. Right now, as of yesterday, we are projecting the same exact amount of homeschool students. During our next meeting, I will have the initial enrollment numbers. If you recall, through the budget cycle, I was saying that our NSDEC projections are, actually, I think the projection was exactly the same enrollment as we had in '24, '25. And I peaked in Power School, and looky there, it's pretty much coming on target. So I'm not shocked by kind of the status quo. Realize one of the capacities Dave has in his position is he manages the submission of the home instruction plans, and then at the end of the year, the progress reports. So he's kind of our district point person with our families that do home instruction. But you can kind of see, as I said last year, you know, it's probably hardly a surprise, the spike in '21 and '22 as we progressed through COVID, and that it seems to have stabilized. Any questions?
Yeah, just, oh, sorry, Bert. Go ahead.
Do you have any clue even now with this October 1st, numbers are going to be for total school enrollment?
Yeah, I, I believe it'll be very, very similar to last year's 2149.
That's basically what you were saying.
Yes.
Okay.
Might be a delta of plus or minus 10.
Okay.
I just had a question. So the homeschool instruction, yeah, if you could. So how does that work? You said at the end of the year, they submit a progress report? We're not seeing progress throughout the year?
For state law, that is all that's required.
Interesting. Okay. Okay.
And you don't evaluate it, you're just kind of collecting and validating that they provide progress. You're not providing any kind of judgment or assessment of that, are you?
Something called the Charles decision, I think it was from the 70s, that gives families a wide latitude in terms of how they would submit. So some submit portfolios, some submit standard report cards, some submit standardized test scores, some are physical, some are digital. So they've got a wide range. I think what we've tried to do on our end is there's a lot of boilerplate education plans that families can provide and totally understand that's within their purview. What we do ask for is just for a little bit more concrete details on the curriculum that they're using, just to help them think about what they might want to be providing for their students. For the most part, families use online accessible curriculum. Some are faith-based and, you know, engage in a lot of field trip type activities. Some are engaged in competitive athletics, so it requires the families to travel. I think since COVID, it's allowed a lot of latitude for families to take on different education options.
And do we have, do we have a lot of homeschooled kids that come to the schools for the electives, like the gym and art or music? I know that was an option for homeschooled kids, right?
I think it varies. I wouldn't necessarily categorize it as a lot, but I think it is, it is an option.
It happens from time to time, and then sometimes you also see it with athletics or co-curricular clubs, but it's not a frequent occurrence.
Not frequently. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
It is kind of interesting, not to go off on a tangent, but there's been conversation about students who do online learning and through, you know, there's, there's this tech collaborative. And believe it or not, it's considered to be its own LEA. It's considered to be a state district. So those students, you could have, and we do have some sandwich students that are part of that, they could not participate versus a homeschooled student. So something that came up this week, yeah.
Any other questions? You already ran away, so.
And then last but not least, you know, once again, I think we had a very, very successful summer as far as our programming for kids, you know, enrichment and enhancement of the curriculum. So we've got Jen Kirk here to talk a little bit about the programming that I know she enjoyed overseeing this summer.
Hi, everyone. I feel like this has become the annual end of summer wrap-up presentation. So as in several summers past, we have a variety of different program offerings. We were able to work with approximately 320 of our students. Many of our students receive extended school year services per their IEPs. We also offer our Summer Scholars Program that runs for three weeks. This year, we started towards the end of July, actually, and ran into August for three weeks, 12 days, which services students entering first grade through entering ninth grade. And then we have our Ride the Wave into Kindergarten Program, which has become a real beloved program with Mr. Dees here in support of that program tonight. The Summer Scholars Program, I think most of you are familiar with it, but we really target the areas of literacy for one hour per day, math for an hour per day, and then every student attends an hour-long special each day. And that rotates throughout the three weeks of the program between art, PE, and our Nature Explorers Program. This summer, we had 154 students attending, again, in rising first grade through ninth grade. Our extended school year services, again, these are very specific services as determined by individual students' IEP team. And it may look like physical therapy. It could be, we had, even had some social skills programs going on this summer, OT, PT. Our Spinnaker classrooms actually run for six weeks in the summer, which is really fantastic. We have our preschoolers with summer services coming in, and that's always a lot of fun. So we were able to service 70 students through ESY. Many of our other, many students also have ESY services on their IEP that also attend summer scholars, so there's some overlap there. And then our Ride the Wave into Kindergarten Program, this, we started with, originally it was Ride the Wave into First Grade right after the pandemic, where so many of our kindergartners missed, you know, that large chunk of their kindergarten year. So we came up with this idea at that point in time to get those students in and re-acclimate it, and it was into first grade. But it was so well-received by kids and teachers and families that Mr. Dantino and I and our, one of our interventionists at Forestale, Michelle Eddy, really helps very much to facilitate this program in the summer. We really wanted to maintain that, and we said, hey, well, why can't, we could Ride the Wave into First Grade, why can't we ride it into kindergarten? So it's really become a real hit. We have approximately 150 kindergarten students entering school next week, and 95 of those students attended Ride the Wave, which was really, really fantastic. Just the goal, the goal of our summer programming, it really varies by program. With the Summer Scholars Program being the most academically focused of the three, we have had questions in the past about how we're tracking the academic achievement goals of that program. So Dr. Quinn is helping me to form some subgroups in our iReady data this fall, where we will be tracking the spring iReady progress of our students that attended the summer programs and compare it to their fall performance. And our goal there is really for maintenance and to, you know, prevent regression is really the goal of the program. We're not expecting new grade level achievement growth over a 12-day program, of course. But the other benefits of these programs is just providing these opportunities for kids to keep their skills, you know, to keep them fresh and to be in these environments and groups with peers who have similar skill sets or achieving at the same levels or comparable levels at that time. So it's a really comfortable environment. And the kids really love it. I actually had a mom come to me the second week of Summer Scholars and say, I wasn't going to send my son to, to Week Two because I signed him up for basketball camp, and he came home and said, I don't want to go to basketball camp. I want to go back to Summer Scholars. So that was, that felt like a real big win there. But it really, it, the kids actually, they have a lot of fun because they're reuniting with friends from the school year, and it's just kind of a fun vibe to it all while they're also keeping their, keeping their skills fresh. The other element of Summer Scholars that really ties in nicely with ESY is that we have at least one co-taught classroom at every grade level. So some of our students, many of our students in Summer Scholars do not receive IEP services during the year. They might be receiving a reading intervention or a math intervention. Their teacher recommended them and said it would be beneficial over the summer. But then, as I mentioned, we have many students who are there because they have extended school year services on their IEPs. So we're able to maintain the inclusivity goals that we have during the school year by having co-taught classrooms at every grade level, which has just been really, really beneficial in promoting the inclusivity all year round. And then, of course, the main goal for our Ride the Wave program is to acclimate our newest and youngest students to our school. And the feedback that we've received from those parents is just overwhelmingly positive, and it's actually kind of a unique program. Many people on the, Mr. Dees sent out a survey, and the feedback was, oh, my goodness, I didn't realize that this was unique to Sandwich. I thought every school district did this. And, and that's, that's not the case. So we're really proud of that. Any questions?
Dr. Miller.
I know, given, you can't totally individualize, but given for the older children to participate, you've got assessment data for each one of those kids. Are you able to tailor to get at their areas that need extra assistance?
We do share, one of the beauties of the program is the groups are nice and small, and it, they tend to be, the older the kids are, the groups tend to be smaller because the older the kids are, the less likely they are to say, yeah, I want to go to the summer program. So the groups are nice and small, and we do provide the summer teachers, which I have to give credit to our full-time teachers, we're, we're really able to fully staff the program with all of our Sandwich teachers from the school year. So we have never had to have external hires, which is just a testament to our, to our Sandwich teachers. But we're able to give them their iReady data from the, from the springtime or their reading level data at the elementary level. So they do get individualized student data, so they're running reading groups that are based on those kids' reading levels. We do try our best to group them, like I said, with similar skill sets and achievement levels. So there's a lot of very small group instruction going on, so they are able to individualize very nicely.
And just so the public knows, this is fully covered under the operational budget of the Sandwich School System.
This is the first, the first summer, yes, that we have run all of these programs through the operational budget. We, of course, ESY has always been part of the special education budget. But Summer Scholars and Ride the Wave up until this summer were funded through SRR3 funds, and of course, that expired last, the end of last September. So it was, you know, we feel very fortunate that we were able to get that through the budget and appreciate that you all value the program to that extent.
Won't put you on the spot for the dollar amount, but I do remember this, the relative, in the big scheme of things, it's a relatively short amount and.
I think it was approximately $130, $140,000.
Much? Okay, I thought it was less, but.
And that's including the special ed part, but if, just the Summer Scholars and Ride the Wave is about $65,000.
I think there's good ROI there.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions, comments? Start to steal your thunder. Thank you, Ms. Kirk.
Thanks.
Anything else from the soup?
We covered them A through E.
There you go. Moving on to old business. This is the approval of the Leading in Learning, the Sandwich Public Schools Strategic Plan for 2025, 2030. As a reminder, we went through it last, last time. I think, I don't know if you have a quick refresher, but this was to require, we did last meeting as a first reading, and this would be our formal vote.
Bert asked me to put together another 20 slides. He begged me, but I said, Bert, no, I think that would be a little excessive. But if you recall, we did the deep dive on July 29th. We did a not-so-deep dive during our last meeting of the 13th. I certainly am not, sir. But I, I did make this kind of, didn't go deep, but, you know, highlighted some of the key pieces during this morning's convocation address to all of our staff. Myself and Dave are planning on the first month of school, doing that deeper dive at staff meetings during our Wednesday PDs with the staff. It's been very, very receptive. Again, I want to publicly thank Sue and 38 remarkable students, parents, teachers, admin, and support staff that came together in a very, very productive and collaborative way to produce this document, because I really feel like it'll be a blueprint for us over the next five years.
I'd like to make a motion to, ladies, go first.
I just want to comment that, and our consultants were wonderful. They really were amazingly helpful, and they were great.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the five-year district strategic plan presented twice already.
Or three times today if you're at the convocation.
I have a motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Anybody want to see the 20 slides?
Alexis does.
There's always one.
All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously, 7-0. Thank you very much. Look forward, a lot of work to that. Again, thank you to the entire 38-member committee and our rep, Dr. Miller, for all her efforts on it. And we look forward to seeing it implemented and seeing the, the progress that it drives. Next up, other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I have none other than a reminder that Ms. Lisa needs to know if you plan on attending the MASK Conference in November. I know it's only August, but early bird registration, I believe, ends in early September, September 5th. So if you plan on attending, please let her know soonest, so we can save us a couple bucks. That does not procure you of going if your, if your schedule changes, but obviously, if we can be more efficient, we want to be. So on that, I have nothing. Moving on to new business, confirmation and approval of the new Director of Pupil Services, as the superintendent introduced Ms. Healy earlier. A quirk in mask general law, you know, we hire the superintendent, we interview the superintendent, we actually do it in public meeting if, I know Alexis wasn't here, but that's how we do it. Mask general law requires us to confirm certain positions, including assistant superintendent. We did that when Dr. Quinn came aboard, the business administrator, the lead nurse, and Director of Special Ed.
That's correct.
So this is not the interview panel. We just confirmed that we endorsed the superintendent's or selection, and we essentially authorize him to enter the contract. So that's kind of the overview. If I missed something, correct me.
No, that's very perfectly and succinctly stated, Kevin.
And can I just add?
Yes, Ms. Benett.
I was fortunate enough to be on the interview team last week, so I'm very excited for the. I was fortunate enough to be on the interview team last week, so I'm very excited for this confirmation tonight.
Mr. Fisher.
Then we can motion that we confirm the Director of Pup, Director of Pupil, Pupil Services.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Dr. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Passes unanimously, seven, zero. Ms. Healy, welcome aboard. I'm not, I'm not going to put you on the spot, which means I'm about to put you on the spot. If you want to come up and just introduce yourself, you're more than welcome to. If you rather pass, you can as well. Okay, fair enough. I just want, I didn't want you to feel shorted. Okay.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
I meant to say too, since Jen Healy, just a background on her, we're very excited, pretty much have, grew up in Middleborough, worked in the Middleborough Schools, really started, started, got in there, developed her own substantially separate classroom, and they named it Jen's Classroom. It's, it kind of reminded me of the Spinnaker Program at Forestale, and worked her way up to Director of Pupil Services, so I feel like she's going to hit the ground running. She knows what to anticipate, the learning curve, she'll just have to learn the way that Sandwich operates, but she knows the logistics, so I'm very excited for all of the families that will be under her care. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Next up is approval of the Facilities Needs Assessment Proposal. Little background, at a recent finance committee, well, if you remember, we, last fall, we talked about, myself and, I forget who was with me, but we met with FinCom, select boards, some town leaders about doing a building assessment, originally thought it was going to come from some town funds, the bid came in a little bit higher than expected, it didn't really go anywhere. It was revisited, this was actually a topic at the FinCom meeting last summer, or earlier in the summer?
Yeah.
When Joe was kind of giving an update. I've said it publicly here in the past, and I said at that meeting, that if we didn't find a way to fund this, we would make it a dedicated line item in our next year's budget. The FinCom and the, the town manager was able to identify some money if approved and transferred and authorized by the FinCom. So, it would be only used for this, we have a bid of $135,000 from Habib Associates. So, part of the condition of the transfer of the funds, if I'm getting this right, if I misspoke any of this, please correct me, is that we, that we're willing to, that we're on board with this and we're willing to accept it, and it would only be used for this. It is conditional on a subsequent FinCom vote, they just need to, from administrative purposes, they need to do it a second time.
One bid?
Well, there were multiple bids, this was the final one.
It is, but also realize this vis-à-vis procurement, Bert, Habib and Associates is also on the state procurement list, so you don't have to go through that. Correct.
Oh, okay, so you don't have to get another bid.
Correct.
And what, why, why couldn't our Director of Facilities person do this? He seems pretty smart.
This is a...
Well, he's very smart, in fact, but, but realize a few things. Part of this dialogue started before Michael came on board, to be fair to Michael. I've had, in my previous district, I've had experience with Habib and Associates, and as I put in the background notes, Habib and Associates, 14 years ago, did the windows and the roof projects here in Sandwich at Oak Ridge and Forestale. So, they do have background and experience. Quite frankly, there really isn't a lot of firms that specialize in this type of work specifically in working with schools. If you haven't done so already, I would invite you to click on the link that shows exactly what this facilities condition assessment report looks like.
I'm not questioning their competency, because this is well outlined here. I'm just, why isn't this, do we have to farm out things?
Oh, to do a magnitude of this type of study? Absolutely. Absolutely.
And what is, what does the town think of, have you, what does the town think of this? Do they do this on their buildings?
So, the, the piece that was interesting was, in working with Steve Habib and getting a quote, we got a quote for the school side, but we also got a quote for the town side. The town felt, and I really don't want to speak for Bud or, really specifically Bud, there's a whole bunch of buildings on the town side, they first tried to focus it down to 12 or 13 that had the greatest need. Realize these buildings are nowhere near the square footage or complexity that our three schools are. I think the school side questioned the financial feasibility of what the quote was for Habib to do the town side buildings versus the school side buildings.
You couldn't get them to do all of them and have a higher price?
We did, and we did get a quote to do all of them. I think the town side was kind of liberating on how feasible is this, or does this make a lot of sense?
They think that the bid was too high? It was too much money for them to afford to do the whole, to participate in this?
I, I think for what their needs are versus what the quote came in, I think they felt like they needed to pare, pare it down a little bit more.
But the town did identify this money from reserve funds, if approved by the FinCom, to transfer to us for this purpose. So, the town is supportive of us going in this direction.
So, the, so the money is not coming from our budget, is that correct?
Correct, it's coming from a town, reserve funds from the town. That's why we're approving to accept it.
So, we're, we're approving somebody else's money, basically.
We're approving to accept it for this purpose and this purpose only.
And I would just add that the capital piece is such a strong pillar of the strategic plan that we cannot do reasonable planning without a very complete assessment of where we are now, and that's beyond the scope of our internal resources who have to run these buildings in the meantime.
We have a 50-year-old high school and two 35-year-old elementary schools. Ms. Menendez.
So, if we approve this tonight, hopefully this draft will get a draft of the assessment by the end of the calendar year.
Correct, that would be the game.
Before budget season, before.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, we'll entertain, if there's no que, Dr. Miller.
I'm looking at the proposed schedule, and it, the target is end of December.
Mr. Fisher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this, is it a bid?
We're approving the acceptance of a transfer.
The acceptance of the Facilities Condition Assessment Proposal. Got it right this time?
Um...
I'm going to intervene and...
Go ahead.
Respectfully say no.
That's fine. We're accepting the transfer.
If you look at the background notes, Bert, I think the verbiage for the vote, the very, very last page, the back...
Okay.
He's the very last sentence. What we want, the motion should be to accept the town reserve funds not to exceed $135,000 for the purpose of conducting the...
Therefore, thank you.
You go.
A motion to accept the town's reserve funds not to exceed $135,000 for the purposes of conducting facilities condition, condition assessment and educational adequacy assessment, assessment, that's the motion.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Ruscheck.
Motion by Mr. Fisher.
Second.
By Ms. Goodwin. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Passes seven, zero. With great thanks to the FinCom, the chair is there, Mr. Colley is hiding behind Ms. Healy, and the town for, they recognize the importance of this, as I said a second ago, 50-year-old high school, two 35-year-old elementary schools, we need to think about what our schools are going to look like five, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, so this would be the first step in it. So, thank you.
But we did have, we did have rugs that were 45 years old.
Only 35, don't, don't exaggerate.
But the rugs must have been there 10 years before.
He's been on board for like two months, cut him some slack. All right, next up, other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I have none. Moving on to subcommittee reports. I don't think any subcommittees have met. We're starting the school year, I would encourage the various chairs to start getting things on the calendar. Dr. Miller.
I'm just thinking, and Kevin, you can put in the details, there are accounts that I think we're somehow supposed to verify, certify, are there? Student accounts, other accounts, this has come up several years in a row that, and I can hear in my mind you saying that we should probably look at these every year.
Are you talking about approval of fees and kind of the fee schedule?
Fees, but don't we have student accounts, we have other accounts that...
We have student activity accounts in the various...
Yes. I'll, I'll look to the policy because...
I think it's something we can start with, at the, at the finance subcommittee level.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's why I'm bringing it up here.
And I did get a MASK mailing that I, there's, in addition to finishing out the policy manual review, they did have some updated, recommended updates for consideration for some odds and end policies. I haven't read them all, it's still sitting on my desk.
So, just for future...
Yes, ma'am. Any other from subcommittees? Seeing none. Warrants? Do we have the signatures? We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Menendez, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Passes seven, zero. Next up is our second public forum of the evening. Would anybody like to come forward? You know, if I was, I had my money on Mr. Holden coming forward? I'm sure you can sign in after, sir.
Good evening. Charlie Holden, 35, Lakeview Drive, the liaison from the select board to this committee. Great meeting, folks. Nice to see you all. I would like to welcome and congratulate the administrative staff. Looking forward to good things. And, if I may, I, I would like to endorse your acceptance of the Facilities Needs Proposal. And having said that, I would also like to endorse the DPW Fire Station project as proposed on Route 130. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, as always. Next up, future agenda items. Am I hearing anything specific? We work off a kind of a schedule, like you, some of the things that you see earlier, superintendent's update, like the home instruction data. We actually have a calendar where we hit a lot of these things to make sure that we are hitting all those things, because otherwise, we would, we would miss things throughout the year. Either Joe or I will forward it to you all, so you know what's on the calendar, so you can have a...
I could do that.
And it's, that was a result of one of our summer workshops a couple years ago, we built it, Dr. Miller expanded it under her, when she was chair, and I think it's, it is very helpful. Wanted, make sure we communicate a lot of things publicly that people might not otherwise know is going on, but you'll be seeing, sometimes when you wonder why these things are on here, that's why. But if you have anything else, we can certainly add it. Okay, seeing no future agenda items, next up is acknowledgements and closing remarks. Ms. Menendez.
I just wanted to acknowledge one of our members tonight, Bert. He has a big birthday coming up tomorrow, so we wanted to wish you a happy birthday. Bert, you keep our meetings exciting. There's never a dull moment with you here, so we hope that you have a great birthday.
Can anybody top that? Dr. Miller, good luck.
I can't top it, but I just feel that as a member of a school committee, at the beginning of school, our hearts go out to the parents and families and the community of, is it Minneap, Minneapolis, where the, that most recent tragic shooting took place, and just, just to acknowledge that.
Dr. Miller, or Mr. Fisher? Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All this to add, school starts Tuesday, buses will be on the roads, drive safe, please. Be patient with, be patient with teenage drivers and be on the lookout for kids. So, with that, and a happy birthday to Bert. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting until our next business meeting, Wednesday, September 10th, at 6:00 PM, right here, as of now, right?
Right now, yeah, that probably, maybe one or two more meetings here. But we're pushing up against it.
Okay, second.
Motion by Ms. Menendez, second by Ms. Goodwin, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Passes seven, zero. Thank you very much. Have a good night, we'll see you in two weeks.